I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn to the old Cindy Mattson for Ward three.
Yep. The I, Cindy Mattson, having been appointed to the office of Councilperson Ward three within and for the city town of Hartford in said county and state, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said city town of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my said office, Councilperson Ward three.
Okay, group call. Kill, Monahan, O'Hara, Randall, Mattson, and Jones and Brennaman are absent at the notice.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. On favor? Motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting from March first.
Motion to approve the minutes from March first.
I'll second. O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Approved bill submitted for payment. Any changes? For this here?
No changes, no.
That's the packet I'm always scared of. That's why I already saw. It's the time we have public comments, the non-agenda items.
We need a motion to...
Sorry, motion. I make a motion to approve those minutes for payment.
Second.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
O'Hara? Randall? And I guess. Public comments on non-agenda items. We have a couple minutes before our seven to five hearing. Yeah, we could review approved resolution twenty-two dash four, the bridge reinspection program.
This resolution basically, we have four, but the state can serve bridges in the city. They're actually culverts, but there's one on Western, Main, Fighter, and Mickelson. So those four structures need to be inspected by the state. Two of them, Main and Fighter, every two years gotta be inspected, and then Western and Mickelson are on a four-year rotation. So back in two thousand and twenty, we had all four of them inspected. So now it's been two years, so Main and Fighter need to be re-inspected. This resolution basically states that the city has a, or the city, the state has a program that they will grant us an eighty-twenty grant, pay for eighty percent of those costs using some of their bridge fund that they get through the state. So this resolution, we pass it saying that we wanna accept the grant from the state to get that eighty-twenty grant for inspection of those two structures on those streets.
I make a motion to approve. Resolution twenty-two. I'll second. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Monahan? And I guess. All right, our seven to five hearing, review annexation petition and approve resolution twenty-two dash three. This is very good approval by planning zoning.
Yes, okay, so the city received a petition to annex in property that is basically east of the city along Highway thirty-eight to the north. There is a map in your packet to show you where it's located at. We received this petition, it has been reviewed by the city attorney, so it's in good form and manner. Even to planning and zoning for review at their meeting last week, they looked it over. They recommend approval to the city council. Since it's a resolution, once passed by the city council, then we annex in the property. We get connection through the right-of-way of, that's just north off of Mickelson Road.
Once it come in as rural?
So it's A right now, yes. Once the property is annexed, they do plan to go for, through the rezoning process and any other...
It will come in as A, okay.
Yep, come A right now.
It's not called A, it's called some kind of...
It's called A one, isn't it?
NRC?
Well, ours is called NRC, yeah.
Yeah.
The company is A one.
So what utilities will the city be required to provide then for this annexation?
So future plans as a developer is looking at developing this, so obviously they need water, sewer, and street. This is the property that we've previously talked about, they're looking at tiffing it, so those utilities, we cover them with the tiff.
We have water in the north side of thirty-eight already currently. And we got hydrants up here.
And the sewer is by the lift station there, right along Mickelson, not Assam's Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
Monahan?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
All right, review approve update to personnel manual, sections two dot one-four and section four dot two.
So I've added this into the packet, it would do a couple of changes to the city's personnel manual. The first one would be adding the section, the two point one four. It addresses the use of city property, basically stating, and it's common sense, but city property, whether that be tools, or equipment, or facilities, can be used for city business, not by employees, or elected people, or appointed people, just for city businesses. The other change would be under section four point two, and this section talks about how city staff, if they attend a regular scheduled city meeting, which right now we have city council and planning and zoning meetings, they get three hours for that time, sir, which they can use as straight time, or they can flex out the time during that same week. Like I said previously, it was for city council and planning and zoning, because those are the only boards of the city. We've now added the park board, which we plan to have a staff member appointed to that. So I added the wording to, if they attend a park and rec board, they will also get that same compensation.
I'll make a motion to approve section four point two of the personnel manual. Motion to make for section four point two specifically, if we have a second? Point one-four is the personal property, yeah. I think, I think two point one-four paints with way too wide of a brush. And I just think it's, I think it needs tuned up. I had a conversation with Teresa, and I definitely understand that there's certain things you don't want city staff doing, but I think it's unrealistic to think there's certain things that either elected officials or city staff, like take a laptop, for instance. If a city employee used a city computer on their break to do something personal, that would break this policy. I mean, you can really get into the weeds on what is city equipment. So, and like I said, I, the conversation I had with Teresa, you know, ultimately it will come down to, you know, supervision, management, you know, what they are and what they're not doing. But my fear is, my fear is that if the day comes when somebody just wants to run a, either an elected official or a city employee of the flagpole, that's the first place I'd look. So, and I, I just, I just think it's too broad and zero tolerance, I think it's, I think it's too much.
And we, we had the conversation, I see where Mark's coming from. You're right, on a break, if they're using the computer, or if they wanna pull a vehicle in during bad weather into the shop. I mean, is that something that we would not allow? So we talked about, you know, we, we don't have anything right now in our employee personnel about using city facilities or equipment, and just to head off problems, like a lot of our ordinance are a place, you know, it's something you maybe want on the book, in case you do have a problem, you can address it with something, but maybe it does need to be tweaked, basically maybe adverbe to the effect, you know, add another line saying, you know, unless authorized by your supervisor, or by the city administrator, or something that, like you said, would give a little bit of leadway for common sense items, you know.
Yeah, as soon as you interject that term, that could vary from council to council.
Yeah, 'cause I do see Mark's point, yeah, council person could.
Yeah, I was, I tried to, I tried to think of a private sector job where they have a zero, a zero policy that you can't, I mean, I can't, again, I can't think of what that private sector job would be that says you can't use anything this company owns, any property this company has, any equipment this company has, for any single personal use, whether you're on job, on break, whatever, five oh five at night, I, I don't know what company, I've never worked for a company like that. Acting duty military, I don't think is that strict. I was just gonna say, probably did, but... But, but that's what, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's where it is. No exceptions, it is pretty broad, so I do tweak it.
A motion on section four point two, do we have a second?
All seconds.
Call the vote. Randall?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that nobody wants Craig to take the flatbed home to, you know, call fire when I get there. But I don't want Amy to get run a flagpole because somebody catches her shopping for a purse on her break. That was the last guy. Or, or whatever. Maybe, maybe you're not a big purse candy, but I don't know. You pair of sunglasses. Would you like to see this, other examples of that, would you like to see it amended? Would you like to see some other communities examples, or just... It, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter whether Teresa tunes it up by stealing another community's, or whether we just tune up what we have, I don't know, but like I said, I, this, this zero percent, this zero percent policy, I just can't get on board with it, because, I mean honestly, because ultimately, the city council, taxpayers won't know what's going on, ultimately it'll come down to Craig and Teresa's supervision. But, I mean, if, and I, and I'm not worried about twenty twenty-two, I'm worried about twenty twenty-eight, when somebody's got a problem with, you know, insert the name. And I think it's, I think it's just, I think it's going down bad road, so. So I will not be, I would not be in favor of that script. Well, given history by this found its way to the agenda, I'd like to see, maybe some other examples.
Yes, I will do that, I'll do some more research, some of it, maybe even kinda, yeah, bring some other examples you guys can look at and see if there's one, something you felt comfortable with, and have some more discussion about it.
Well, I mean, and, I don't know, ask the other employees what they think should or shouldn't be in it, I don't know. Like I said, I just think it's too... You wanna see something more official, or just, or a motion on that, or just on the table, or...
No, I think we got a motion to accept the one. I will just come back, back with some more examples on the other ones for you.
All right, moving on, special event permit, Buffalo Red Brewery Brews and Cruze, Car Cruze.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi everyone, yep, so we have the application in front of you. This event would be the third Thursday of the month, from May through September. Again, we are asking for permission to close the street from Main Avenue towards the alley east on First. And this would include also open container on our perimeter around the brewery, as well as the usage of the street that we have blocked off.
We need a motion to approve the special event permit, Buffalo Red Brewery. For the Brews and Cruze.
How many events will this be?
I believe five.
Five events, yeah. So a motion, do we have a second? Um, let's see, I'm just, I assume you get some support from other downtown businesses. I guess my question is, how do, how do they react from, for, for these special event permits?
They love the overflow of traffic, but they're, they have no interest in participating.
Can I make a comment to that?
Sure, yeah.
Is a... Is another downtown business owner, she has not personally come and talk to me.
Okay.
And this directly affects my business, is, I'm right next door.
Sure, your, your name for the record, just to make sure we have it.
Benjamin Parker with Echo Holdings.
Echo Holdings, thank you.
Every time the seat closes, the street, for Farmer's Market, the people get aggressive, trying to set up their stands. I've expressed my concern with Kathy dozens of times in the past about doing daring working hours. Six o'clock in the evening is fine, because businesses are closed, we're gone. Four o'clock in the evening, when she wants to shut it and down, it's not, we're still at work. There's still traffic that runs through, it comes in from First, up Main to Golden West, Heatherville, City Hall, we dropped our warrant, Payton Hall. People come in to my office at that same time. It creates a burden on me and my customers that walk in and out. Not that I ask them to eat, but the twenty or thirty a month that do come in my doors, they don't wanna be inconvenienced by having to deal with all of that, and having the street closed. So she has not come and talked to other business owners downtown, and how we feel about this.
So for this application specifically, they're...
It's on a Thursday, the third Thursday. We already closed the fourth Thursday down for Farmer's Market, now she wants to do it twice.
This is the, do the first Thursday for Farmer's Market, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, this is a different, different event, a different portion of the street. We've been doing this for the last three years, and I do send out a letter prior to every season, to every business owner in the downtown. And while Mr. Parker's concerns have been raised in pushing us towards moving the market specifically to another day, I have a list full of vendors that aren't willing to do that, and so without vendors, we have no market. This is a di- this is a different event that is not asking for the closure of Main Street, which does not in fact interfere with any of the other businesses. It is strictly First Street, which affects us and our parking, and perhaps a few of the through traffic that can easily go around.
Yeah, and where are, where are your hours of operation, Ben?
I'm in the office from six thirty to five every day, Monday through Friday, and I work Saturdays and Sundays on call.
So yeah, with this event starting at five, and with it being restricted to that half a block essentially from Main to the alley, to address your concern, then in that case, in my mind, the traffic on Main would still be flowing?
It's not embedded as far as north and south traffic goes, you are correct. It is embedded when the farmer, when the farmer leaves my office, he wants to go down First to make the U-turn and come back to Second, or go north to thirty-eight, he can't make that left turn on First to go to, to go north.
Is he not able to go right?
A lot of them don't turn right, they want to go left, it's like I turn left every day when I leave my office, because it's more than me, for me to have two left turns to go back to thirty-eight.
Thank you for expressing your concern, and certainly these events are meant to enhance the downtown and the community feeling, so certainly is a consideration, it sounds like some preventative steps, or you know, some, communication has been provided. So any other couple of public comments? First, we got a motion and a second? Call the vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And O'Hara?
Yes.
And I guess. Thank you for your input. All right, we have our reports, Hartford area fire rescue report.
Good evening. So February thirty-eight calls, twelve in the city. March training, EMS training's gonna be trauma, fighter training is gonna be SCBA air management. No combined training this month. And if you haven't heard, I talked to Teresa last week about a disaster planning training that we're gonna be doing in April, so you'll all be invited to that, I don't know if you, did you send it to me?
Yeah, I put it into my report, so...
She'll have a date, we'll come up with time and everything like that shortly, and then I'll get that to Teresa, so she can get it out to you guys, or help you do the things.
Just from my understanding of these numbers, thirty-eight total calls in November, twelve of those in the city limits.
In February.
In February.
Yep.
February, thirty-eight calls, twelve in the city limits.
Yep.
So twenty-six in the township, surrounding townships.
Yep.
How, how does your disaster planning line up with the city's disaster plan SOP?
That's why we're doing the disaster planning, because the fire department does not have a specific disaster plan.
The city does.
It's basically the cities, so...
So you want your own?
Well, it's not our own.
To complement the cities?
Yes, so what we're gonna be focusing on is, I mean, your disaster plan that you have is gonna be, when I say long-term, I could mean from like six to how many hours or days until the disaster is wrapped up. What we're gonna focus on is the initial, initial event through the first four to six hours. So what are we gonna do that gets the ball rolling with getting additional resources, all that stuff?
All right, okay, so let's, I think the city's disaster plan actually got put into place after the tornado hit. Can't remember the name of the...
Up north, or whatever.
Yeah, so, so I, I assume that your disaster, 'cause, yeah, you say the city's disaster plan is four to six days, or, you know, day one to two weeks, but I promise you that if something like that happens in this town, and fire department is not in lockstep with the city, that's gonna cause incredible problems, whether it's the first four to six hours, or whether it's the first four to six days.
Nope, it's the same plan. Trying to word this in a way to make it more understandable, but it's gonna take a while for us to line up all those resources that we're gonna need in the city plan. You know, we're gonna have to line up, you know, mayor, city council, city administrator, public works, all that stuff. Something's gonna happen in the first two hours, we'll say. What we need to do is, we need to plan on what our initial response is gonna be, who we're gonna need to call for resources, where we're gonna put all the resources, staging areas, how to deal with having multiple nine-one-one calls that are backlog, so to speak, because we're trying to differentiate between the, I'm trapped and I'm hurt in my basement because a tornado came group versus the, you know, a tree fell on my house, and, you know, is it, you have to prioritize what you're gonna respond to, and make sure that we can get the resources that we need in that first little bit to affect rescues and stuff like that.
So from zero to say command post, operational setup and...
Yep.
All right.
No, they'll complement the plan, it's just something for us to work on that we don't really have.
I just wanted to make sure you guys weren't gonna have a totally different plan.
Oh, no, nope.
Do you do tabletop exercises, or collaborate with the county?
We, for this class, we hope to have some tabletop stuff, it kinda depends on how long it goes. I think Todd and Lo is gonna teach it, he said it's about a three-hour class, so if we have some time, we'll hopefully do some of that stuff.
So we have to build from scratch, was there a state guideline that is, you know, some, you know, falls in line to Mark's point?
That's a good question.
Okay.
Because I don't have, I haven't taken the class, so, you know, it's a kind of a first step thing. You know, we'll be able to evaluate what we have, what we don't have, what we need, everything like that, so.
The city's emergency plan, Mark's pretty familiar with it, because he was kinda on the committee that, you know, put together, but we work with county emergency services and kinda mimic the county, so, you know, we work together in conjunction, but, Matt's right, it, it's a broad spectrum, I mean, we not only talk about, you know, what the fire department does, what does the sheriff's department do during that time, what does the city officials do, what do other county resp-? It's kind of a broader scope of, kinda everybody coordinating together who's responsible for what, and kinda breaks down, what are you doing in the event of a trade, or what do you do in the event of a disaster, what? Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a broader spectrum, so I think you guys are looking for, what is your department gonna do, right? Yeah, so kind of work in conjunction with the plans.
I, I think it's a good idea to have, to have a short-term plan, because honestly, the, was it Spencer? Because I mean, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned from that, it wasn't, Spencer was, there was two of them. I don't recall, but... We don't have chance. That, that was a, yeah, but you had multiple people talking to the media, you're dealing with the town, the town itself, or what was left of the town, you know, and then you're involved in township, and county, and state, and I mean, there's so many people, and there's people closing down roads, and it, it was a, and then we, that's Hartford just said, man, we better get something.
I might mention, you know, the good resources, Peripatria's, I don't know if you're familiar with them. They're excellent in disaster preparedness and resources that you guys in the department would be able to potentially tap into.
Okay.
So, very good people to look with. And they do search and rescue, they do drownings, they do...
I think we're committed for having a plan, give a plan, because, you know, as soon as it takes for a plan, it will out the window too. We got a plan, no, something changed, no, we're planning. Thanks, Matt, it's good first step. All right, Amy Farr, Chamber and Economic Development Director, report.
Thank you, my information is in the packet, I do wanna point out a couple of things. The Chamber's annual banquet was held recently, we had over two hundred attendees, and we heard nothing but wonderful comments, so a special thank you to all the... heard nothing but wonderful comments. So a special thank you to all the volunteers that assisted to make that event such a special and successful event. We will be starting with Discover Hartford, May second through to seventh. We have already started some planning on that and hope to bring some more things forward as we work on that. On the HABF side, working on a couple of things there. I have a proposed date, waiting for confirmation with ISG for our Citywide Master Plan. Final meeting to be March thirty-first and works with that and then once that's confirmed, we'll go ahead and move forward with that. We're working on invites for the April seventh envision investors meeting for the whole investor council. Just had a quick meeting prior to coming to here. Things are on task for that and we'll be having a full investor meeting tomorrow evening as well. Had a wonderful tour last Wednesday at the Humboldt Dairy Farm. Learned a lot of great things there. Continuing to schedule some tours. Our next tour will be April sixth. So looking towards that. And then the final thing, working on the next community guide for the city of Hartford. We're going to change it up a little bit. We've got some ideas. So going to be having a meeting on that on Monday with Garrett. And he just recently joined the Chamber as well with H Media. So that is my report.
We need to find a replacement for Mayor Manning.
No, because he was representing that as the bank representative. Mark is our representative from the council.
Right. All right. I was just looking at some documentation and his name popped up.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. I have a question about your dairy tour.
Yes.
Is it customary to show that man any gratitude?
What was that?
Is it customary to show him any gratitude?
What do you mean?
For letting people go out there and tour.
I think it's a good thing to thank them for allowing us to tour because we're the Hartford Area Development Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce. So we have members from the Humboldt area that are members.
Nothing more than thank you. Nothing more than verbal.
We have a card being signed tomorrow. We sent it to him. Do you want me to also say he asked Mark to be a wonderful driver?
I'm just asking because, because I don't think you, I don't think you grass coming tours go through that place.
Oh, no, there's several. This is my second tour within that facility. So, yeah.
But it's not just your group. It's.
Correct. And I need to email the superintendent to see if we can work something in Southwest Central as well as another school district.
And he's a good natured, he's a good natured family.
I was going to say, the family is good people.
It's a good-natured family and I would just hate to see that hospitality that he shows run out just because people treat it like there's an open door.
No, absolutely not. Hope we had a great tour.
It's a great facility.
And they have wonderful drivers, I heard.
They do? Some of them best.
Okay. I don't know about that, but I've heard some good ones. End of my report.
Enemy of the grade is good.
There we go. Thank you.
All right. City Engineer report.
Yes, thanks folks. You have everything in there. Overall, a couple new ones that we have. We have the preliminary site plan for development. We provided some input on. Then we have the Highway thirty-eight turn lanes. The plans actually came to us just for review and if there was any complications or conflict with anything from the city perspective. And they're not expanding any right away. It's pretty straightforward progress with their trying to get accomplished. The Vance Peterson, one Vance had called a contract to fix the issue, but we've not received a timeline for that and we're pushing for that. The Six and Mile roadway reconstruction, we bid that last Thursday and four bids were received. Zacharias Construction, Holston Excavating, H&amp;W Contracting, and First Grade Excavate. I did include our actual bid tab in there. You can see that the low on the base bid was within point two percent of our engineers estimate. That's more luck than necessary. But really good bids and really great to see that we got four numbers on that. And then on the add alternate, that was actually about twenty-six percent over. And really reviewing that add alternate, a lot of that increase was on the Jack and Boar Steel casing pipe. That casing pipe is really difficult. Right now, we just bid a well two, two months ago, a month ago, and I think it was fifty percent over in the entire portion that was over was that steel pipe. They are able, they indicated that they were able to lock it in once it got loaded on the truck. And that's just the way it is right now. So overall, really, really happy with the numbers. The nice part is really on those numbers as we outlined in the bid. The contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder of the base bid or the base bid plus add alternate bid. So it's really your decision to either award that. And in the add alternate, I will say it's not immediately adjacent to the project either. There's a separation distance to it. We can bid that separately later as well as a part of a water main specific project or its project in itself, considering that that did come in higher than our estimate as well. So that's the information on, any questions on the bid for Six and Mile?
I have a couple of questions, Dave.
Yes.
Is getting four bids on that project, do you think, is that, is that a good number of bids? Because I was actually surprised we only got four bids.
It's a pretty, I mean, it's a pretty tough environment right now. Yeah, I mean, from a contractor perspective, it is hard. It is lit. I would say it's also, you know, we're getting towards, you know, weather start to turn and some people may very well be getting filled out at that point in time as well. I like our number, the value that came in. And I wouldn't be scared, you know, I never like when we get one or two, you know, because you don't really have a real good comparison at that level. But four, yeah, four is sufficient for me. And I would say that we've gotten four from contractors that I've either worked with or the reputation that I have requested from other entities has been, has been good for those folks as well.
Yeah. So where do you advertise when we look for bids?
Yep. So the typical advertisement, the old-fashioned advertisement, you have to in the newspaper.
Yeah.
But then we're also putting that with the plan holders rooms as well. And then we also do Quest CDN, which is the online database. So they don't actually have to come anywhere and physically get plans from us. They actually are able to download those directly from our website, but that's actually through the Quest for our site.
Okay.
Yep. So Mark, we also put a list together of different contractors that, they sent the letters and our invites and rumors of them.
Yeah. We send those specifically to the ones that.
Have done work.
That we, that Craig had either provided that he had done work with or that we had worked with in the area as well.
Yeah, I guess I just thought maybe we got more than four, but.
Mark or Travis, may I speak first?
Hi. Yeah, we're on this specific.
On this specific, yeah. Feel free to tell me now.
Well, we don't have a motion or a second yet and so.
I'll wait.
I'm just asking the city engineer questions.
Yeah, no.
And you actually, I want to address your question. So I'll wait till there's discussion because I think that would be the part where I might go say something.
Question number two, Dave.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing that threw me off when I looked through the packet was the, it said the increase, the twenty-six percent increase on the add alternate.
Yeah.
Well, the first thing that caught my attention was I think Craig put that on there, not the city council. But, because I don't remember the city council talking about and added alternate.
Yeah, it was the water, to create the loop for the water line.
One under thirty-eight, yeah.
Maybe I wasn't hearing that.
I think you were, yeah, I think you were absent as a matter of fact.
So my question is, what threw me off was the steel casing. Do we typically put water line and steel casing?
On DOT, because we're going underneath the highway there.
Really?
Yep. And that.
The water line itself doesn't have steel casing. It's, right, it's protected by.
Yeah, so you, so you have an oversized steel casing, you have your water main, that's PVC that's running inside that with chalk. So it holds it in place from major movement. But really, it allows you then, you're not doing anything to excavate underneath the roadway. And from a leak perspective, it's going to go out one of the, one direction or the other direction. And that's the integrity piece that the DOT is going to want when they're, when they're looking at that in the permit cross.
So, so the reason it's got steel case in the bore is because it's Highway thirty-eight?
Absolutely, yeah. We, so we won't be doing it. If you were, if you were crossing your own roadway, you're not going to. And we put water main underneath roadways all the time, you know, underneath.
And then it'd just be horizontal bore with just PVC?
Yep, exactly. Yep.
That explains. I, yeah, I didn't know that, I didn't know that that would be a piece of anything that has to take case.
Yep. Good questions.
So as I spoke with Teresa earlier about this, and we have, over the last year and a half, two years, had these high-dollar projects come to us and then not acted on them. My, and the reason for, in my opinion, for not acting on them is to give the community a chance to see the agenda, see the minutes, see it on the, on the video if need be, and talk to the city council about, you know, how's that affect me? Where are my tax dollars going? How much is my assessment going to be? So that was my, really what I'd like to see with, with this and the next design proposal as well, is to get the education, give the public a chance to speak, and then postpone it until our next meeting.
That would be the correct.
And you do have thirty days. So as a part of the bid documents, you do.
Right. I clarified that as well, that we weren't going to throw the contractor out of some, some window that they have as well, so.
So the add alternate came in at what, just about two hundred thousand?
Uh, well.
One eighty-nine?
One eighty, one eighty, yep. So that's what, that's the only, that's the thing that makes it confusing, right? You know, it's just your base bid low is Zacharias, but your base bid plus add alternate low is Holston.
I mean, it doesn't confuse me, just because it's in two totally different neighborhoods. The one doesn't have anything to do with the other. And I just, and I mean honestly, I just, I think it's a standalone project, or it's a stand, or it's another project with water line. Or, I don't know, it just seems like a standalone project.
And the other nice thing, it's designed, planned and specs. It's not hard, you know, if we were to do that, we're not redesigning. You know, it's already designed.
To that point, Mark, I'd say if you look at the mobilization cost for this project and you think about that as a standalone project, I don't think it gets any cheaper. So it takes some public input.
Okay, this is for Councilman, Councilman Monahan, but to give some breadth to your question, we've had projects, I'm sorry, Daniel Lloyd, West Central Superintendent. Okay.
Dan, can I use that podium?
No, I really don't.
My bad.
I don't study all voice.
Can't hear me that time.
Um, we've had bid projects for the school throughout the year. One, I'll give you the example of a high school roof, letters, cooling and refrigeration products in the kitchen. And in both of those two, and in fact, all bid projects that we've had this year, we've been thankful that we've had four or more. In today's market with a boatload of public funds, I don't know what the scope of this project is, but if you've got just a paltry five million dollar project, construction firms have twenty million project, twenty million dollar projects. So some of them may be looking at, you know, we're not going to work on something that small. To get four, that is a good representation. That's what we've, we've encountered. And again, I've been thankful that we've had four or more in all of our bids. And then the second, looking at the twenty-six percent increase in variance, again, volatility of our market and supplies. CDX, I'll use as an example, which may not be applicable in this case, but it's gone from twenty-seven bucks a sheet to over a hundred. That variance gives you some.
I'm well aware of the, of the supply price difference, so I'm aware of that.
Again, I'm going to, I hope it helps that, yeah, four is, that's a good number. And I, I don't know what you did for livelihood if I got last came out smart. No disrespect.
Oh, no, you'll, you'll, you know who did.
I appreciate that.
Well, I think, I think the last, the last project we bid was, and I don't recall how many bidders we had on that. I just, that's the last project we bid and I think it was more than four, maybe it was. I mean, I remember looking at bid sheets and there's like thirteen, you know, there's thirteen bidders, but, you know, that's, that's back when.
One last thing again, that's kind of to support your question and my statement previously, one project the district did have is not going to be done in our original timeframe because we had no bids. And you can't go up and beat bushes for birds that don't exist.
Same as West Central.
No, it is not.
All right. Any further discussion on Sixth and Month project?
So where do we begin?
We're gonna, we're going to, well, I'd like to see it postponed until our next meeting.
The bid, the bid and the alternate postpone both decisions.
At that point, we'd be able to approve bids. It's actually, I believe, done a decent job over the weekend.
I'll make a motion to postpone the bids for Sixth and Month project until we can give some further information to the public and give them a chance to respond.
I'll second.
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
O'Hair?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And Amios.
The next one we had on there was the water tower painting. We got a proposed project schedule attached to that as well. We have two options on the interior and exterior coating. And really, they do come with a different lifespan. We really want to compare those two. The estimates that we have on those are three hundred and five thousand for the base and the alternate, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And just comparing a longer life option to be, to be, we're playing in a really large window of construction. And that's really to allow the contractor time that works best for them. Those water tower painting projects are one, they can come in and knock it out pretty quick. And that's what we have in our contract documents as well. We're giving them a pretty long window to get it done, but a short window once they start. And the intent is, but we want to be flexible with them to really, really giving them the full, the full summer season to fit it in their schedule. So overall, I think what we're looking for there is to just go forward with the, for getting of this maintenance project. Any questions on the water tower painting? I know we've talked about this one quite a bit.
Would it permit, or are you having bids back?
We don't have it yet. No.
We haven't, we haven't wanted.
We haven't, that's why I just want approval to go get bids. Yep.
Yeah, I think honestly, only come to locally, I mean, on that deal, you're probably only going to get two at the most.
On the.
McGuire and who's the other player in town?
Well, there'll be quite a few that'll actually do a painting project, you know, a blasting and painting project. An erection project, you're almost always looking at the same three or four, depending on geography. And in this area, McGuire's probably pretty tough to beat. But I, you know, I want, I want more than one. And on a painting project, I think we will be able to get one or more. Yep.
And that's just about sandblasting, sandblasting the whole thing?
Sandblasting the whole thing.
The whole thing?
It hasn't been painted since original, right?
Right.
Can I make a comment to this?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Again, Benjamin Parker with Beckholdens. As far as sandblasting goes, if you all are interested, I happen to have several of my customers that sandblast and paint water towers nationwide. They're traveling companies. I would be happy to forward their contact information to ISG so they can submit a request for a bid for the water tower painting project. I know two of them that are based Minnesota and Nebraska and service all twenty-eight states.
Sure, absolutely. I think it'd be easier if you just told them to look where Dave's going to put the bid at.
Yeah, yeah, we can provide that information easily. It's right on our website.
Sure. Will that be on the city's website as well? We don't typically post those on the.
Yeah, I don't think you have in the past, have you?
Okay.
Okay. I'll just get with you and give my information so you can let me know when you post it.
You bet. You bet.
All right.
And even the one in the newspaper will actually show where it's online.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Messenger?
Yeah.
That's stable, all right, Truce?
Yeah, yeah, put in your official newspaper.
Have to put it in on paper record.
Yeah.
Any motions?
I need to take on some, uh, letting the bid.
I'll make a motion about the water tower sandblasting and painting project for bid.
I'll second.
Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Montague?
Yeah.
And I think Amy stole my thunder on the community development plan, so we've got, uh, we've got that in, ready to, to view for the public. Um, I think we're just finalizing the date on that, so. Good? Um, and then the only other one was, I think Travis, you were, you were outlining that you want some additional time on the, um, the water re- re-commission facility contract.
Yeah, this would be our opportunity to review that, um, that proposal, the design proposal, because it's been a few months, uh, since that was presented, and give, uh, the public if there's any public comment at this time about that, a chance to speak. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to postpone, uh, your next meeting.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Mattson?
Yes.
Montague?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Any further?
Well, end it.
I can see it. All right, Craig, Public Works Superintendent reports.
Just gotta touch on a few things, may report. Um, water meters, we have four left, the, the ones that are under the trailers, we're hoping this week it'll get up in the sixties, we're gonna get a chance to get a panel off on it and get out of the heat from, get those done, so hopefully by the end of the week we'll have them completely done. Um, water sewer project owners, uh, the sewer project, excuse me, uh, Western is going real good, they're kicking black dirt down now and getting their level off a little bit up there, so they do know that we have mall, uh, coming up, so they are gonna concentrate on the, on the parking lots and getting that stuff cleaned up for, so we can get the families out there to play ball, so. Um, otherwise, uh, weather side, I'm hoping tomorrow we can get, we'll have enough frost up to get down deep enough for the conduit for the, getting that wired, so we'll have that hopefully up and running by the next Saturday test, so. And then the only thing else that's all I got to report, then the only other thing is, uh, about the, uh, couple of training classes coming up now. Uh, first one is, um, the street municipal, uh, uh, spring training, uh, meeting is April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and that is in Rapid. And, uh, I'd like to have Jesse and myself attend that. And then the other one is, uh, May seventeenth through the nineteenth is, uh, an advanced wastewater treatment class, and that's all in Rapid also. This class is only once a year. Last time I took it was I did a Zoom one about two years ago, just kinda watched it on Zoom. Um, and there is a chance to take in a certification, uh, test afterwards. This would, um, allow us, if we pass, to have our class threes, which, what, what we do around that facility, if we get that in. Um, and Jesse and myself would like to attend that too, so.
Our class threes, what you're saying, that's the Aromat facility that's gonna.
Yeah, any mechanical plant like that would be a class three, yeah.
So you and Jesse can both come?
Yeah, yeah. Neil will be going to the, um, Water and Wastewater Conference in the fall, hopefully. Um, so that's why they swift, they rotate, keep their hours up, so.
So how many, how many class two operators do you have right now?
All three of us are, well, three of us are class twos. Um, Alan's working on his classes, so he's got two classes, uh, one is taken, and I think the wastewater treatment, one is the one he's, uh, looking at taking in Sioux Falls.
Is he class one here or?
He's got class one in water, um, water collection, or wastewater collection, and water treatment, I believe, there's.
So we're, we're taking him down that path?
Yes, yeah. It, um, like the class twos, you have to be, I think it's two or three years' experience before you can go on to your class twos, and then you're, like, for class threes, um, they used to be, you had to have, uh, college background, um, now they changed it to several years of service, so it's, I think it's ten years before you can even take your class threes.
I'll make a motion to send, you said Jesse, right?
Yep.
Craig and Jesse to be minimum twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, the May seventeenth to the nineteenth, classes. South Dakota Municipal Street Maintenance Association and the Advanced Water Treatment Training.
What Craig failed to mention is he's the president of the association, I should.
It was about being spoken.
This will be my last time on the board for.
That's what you said the last two times.
We're close to retiring now, so.
And then you can, they're begging me, they're begging me to be president.
All right, we have a motion in a second to send Jesse and Craig to some training. Montague?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
That's all I got, unless, he, what do you have, anything for me?
Uh, I don't know, maybe, that was just specifically April twenty-sixth, my seventh. I saw Dog Park in your report, so I'm distracted. Moving on, Finance Officer report?
Yeah, I just had a couple additions to my report. Um, reminder that the equalization meeting is next Tuesday evening. We have six appeals so far. The deadline is Thursday at five, so we'll see if we get more. Um, I'll have all that information gathered in, in the box for review over the weekend. I'll have it done by Friday, so. Um, for the school board, they had their meeting last night, and Allison McGillivray? I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right. She will be on the board as the school board's representative, so. And then financing on the sixth and month street, I'm working with Truce on that. Um, we're gonna, looking at taking money out of reserves for part of it, but thinking we'll need to loan about six hundred and thirty-five thousand, so I've reached out to the three banks in town, I'm waiting back for, um, word on one of them, and once we get that, we'll look that over and bring it back to you guys at a later meeting to discuss.
Does the county send in anybody here in repossession?
No, they don't do that anymore.
They quit doing that altogether?
They are available in their office, so we can always call into them if we need to talk to them.
There was a lot more fun when there was somebody here from the county. Paid all the, paid all the arrows. That's probably why they quit.
They said they don't have enough staff to go around, to do them for every community, so.
All right, thank you, Karen.
Sure.
City Administrator report?
Um, just a couple updates from what's in your packet. Um, under grants, the bike and retro, we did this afternoon, get our notice to proceed. I wanted to tell you that. Uh, we got an agreement last week, and we got a notice to proceed, so we can start doing some clearing and preparing for that, so we can move forward with that project. Um, then, um, on the Mickelson Road project, um, as you recall, the last thing we really have to button up with that was, um, getting the FEMA floodplain, um, you know, reestablished after we, we changed a little bit with putting those culverts. FEMA's had that information. It becomes, I've, I've talked with Heidi in their office, and that becomes final on March twenty-third, so we're getting close to the end of buttoning down that project. Um, we did receive, so the land that we did annex, that is, like I said, the land that is talking about wanting to do a tip with the city, they did submit an application. Our attorney's reviewing that right now. Um, we're gonna have a short meeting tomorrow, just to go over some questions he asked of them and make sure, um, he understands, and we walk through it all, um, before we move forward, but, um, he's looking at, given your future meetings, some, some more meetings in regards to that, like I said, and rezoning that property and, and moving forward with, um, progress on that land. Um, really, just a little update on the summer help, but we've been advertising, I think we've got two lifeguard apps in. Um, Amy has submitted for the pool manager position again, one Public Works, and, and that is it so far. I mean, we have only had, um, I'm gonna report, our dump site is supposed to open here, uh, beginning of April. We have only had one applicant, that was Brian Both, so, uh, usually they're very hard to find people to do that, so I hired him right away, and so he's gonna start, um, with that, and so we, we got that position filled, and we know, we know we'll be opening up the site at that time, so, um, we'll continue to take applications, and hopefully the closer we get to summer, we'll get some more apps in, so we'll keep advertising for them.
You think our pay rate is competitive, is, or maybe it wouldn't help to change it, just there's just not enough bodies out there?
Might, I, I know Sioux Falls is a little higher, but then we're kind of in line with the area towns, though, around here too, so I've kinda reached out to them, so I think it's the other smaller towns were in line, uh, Sioux Falls is a little bit higher though, so, but, I mean, they gotta drive into town, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll have to see if we need to do any more enticing, the closer we get to it, but we'll keep it open for now. Um, and like Matt said, I put in there a little plug, they are having that, um, training on April twenty-eighth, and once they get a time and a place set up, I'll definitely pass that along to you guys. I, um, I do plan to attend, just to be part of that process, so. Um, all I have is a few questions.
Do we reach out to last year's summer help and ask them?
Yep.
Yeah, I send letters to all of them, and then another application and job description, so.
This is, this is open to the public. Truce, I need two apps, 'cause I know two kids that stay in the same room that I do, who wouldn't be applying?
There you go.
I've also been instructed then to wait for the sixty thousand dollar offer. Don't be happy with what you get.
It's a six-year list, I don't.
Got a lot of her metal boy to that.
All right, good. Nothing under old business, new business, review approved, uh, application number one for, uh, site works, for the work they're doing.
Make a motion to approve application number one, site works for six hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, one month.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? O'Hara?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Montague?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. All right, approved registration for the SODA, SODACE conference.
Yeah, and so what this is, this is a conference, um, it's held, um, basically through the South Dakota Municipal League, um, it's, they're an affiliate of the Municipal League, and it's on code enforcement, so, um, Kyle being new, I think it'd be a good opportunity for him to go and, um, take a little bit of training, um, get a little, um, know some other code enforcement officers, and get kinda that networking established. Um, this is an overnight conference, so I'm looking for council approval for this. Um, I do also have, already have him registered to attend, uh, just a day conference in Sioux Falls to, it's, um, on building codes for apartment buildings, so they're offering that one just during the day, and we have him signed up for that, and as other training opportunities arise, we will, um, continue to sign them up. But, um, Paul is working with him as far as learning the codes, and there is a couple of, uh, when it gets a little more familiar with them, there are a couple of online tests and trainings he can do, so we will be able to do that process too. But, but this would be, um, like I said, some training on the code enforcement side.
Make a motion to approve registration for Kyle?
Yep.
To go to the SODACE conference?
Second.
Mattson?
Yes.
Montague?
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Make a motion to approve the tax advantage parks of point three six oh one. Especially if you want to go in. Sorry.
O'Hara? O'Hara?
I'll second.
Montague?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara? I'm yes. All right, review approved, uh, the park and rec board recommendation for a dog, for a dog park, this came from the meeting you had last week with the park and rec board.
So on the twenty-eighth was, uh, the first meeting of the park and recreation board. Um, they had several things on their agenda, the kind of business item things, but, um, one thing was the dog park that we discussed. Um, as you know, we've been talking the last year or so on dog park, possible locations, possible costs. Um, all in all, three grants have been applied for. Um, we did not get any of the grants, basically it's kinda the same old story, a lot of applications, not enough funding, no real, um, problems with our application as far as, you know, um, issues with it, it's just, um, just not enough funds out there. Um, so the park and recreation board did talk about this at their first meeting last month. Um, their recommendation is to move forward with it. Um, there is a cost estimate in your package, which outlines the cost that we come up with, plus then just, uh, a basic rendition of where, um, we would like to place it, and we're looking at the place to be just right east of the current, um, dump site, the yard waste disposal site, there's that whole grassy area in there. There's a small parking lot, light path goes right by it. Um, our plans, we talked about when we were planning for the grants, is there'll be two different sections, you know, smaller dogs versus larger dogs, trying to bring water to the site, um, put some more shade trees in, then we'll have signage, benches, benches, um, different play, exercise equipment for the dogs, so that's covered in our cost estimate. Um, this dollar amount was set in budget last year by the council, so, um, we're gonna be funding for, kind of a nice thing that came up during the park and recreation board meeting, is that it was pointed out, the bike and rec trail committee, when they dissolved, they did donate funds for this, three thousand dollars. Um, we have a private donor that has also offered to donate funds to the city for this project, so, uh, we think we can get some of this covered in, in some donations too as well. Anything more to add?
Troy Larson, the newly elected president of the park and rec board, and Callie's also on the board. We were very excited to take this up as our first action item, and I think the park and, or the bike and rec trail committee made a secondary donation, so I think it was more like four or five thousand, but you can confirm the actual amount. Um, and I, I'd like to make some additional comments, but I'd want to first turn it over to two Girl Scouts, Rachel Lurang and Alexa Larson, who've been spearheading this for the last few years, so I'll save my remarks until they comment.
Well, hello, I'm Rachel Lurang.
And I'm Alexa Larson.
We are excited that the city is taking steps to move forward with the dog park, and we're here to endorse our support and exactly involved in the process for our Girl Scouts Gold Award.
I, I hope you're impressed with how quickly the wheels have opened. Policy moved. I was, I was expecting on that one, man. I was expecting some longer comments. What I'd like to, uh, outline too, or just mention, is that the park and rec board talked about additional opportunities to raise money. Uh, my formal role with the park or the trail committee, we were able to raise money for benches, uh, picnic tables, shelters, that was all just word of mouth. We didn't even use any social media. Callie's a social media genius, and so we believe there's, we're, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity, uh, to get donations from the community for benches, shelters, all those things. So I think that cost is gonna be significantly less than you see. That's a worst-case scenario. Uh, but this is something the community very much needs, survey, the Girl Scouts did a survey, uh, multiple surveys, and uh, I, I heard anecdotally, uh, from Craig going from, to home to home, about half, uh, the community, or half the homes have dogs.
No, probably ninety percent to three.
Uh, and I also heard that there's, you know, at times issue of dogs not being on their leash. Uh, this would be a great opportunity to, to, uh, address that, give the, give the dogs a place to go and stretch their legs and do some running, uh, without being off their leash. And so, finally, we really appreciate in advance your support. Uh, we'd like to get this up and running, so it's usable by late summer, early fall, all depends on bids and all that stuff, but excited to finally get this going, so thank you for your consideration. Any questions? Any questions?
And I just have some concerns maybe, and this is down the road as we get it going. But we have a challenge with dogs being licensed in Hartford in the first place.
That's what I've heard.
So just wondering, just something to put in your brain as you guys are meeting and talking, is a sign, something that says every dog must be licensed. Doesn't they have, don't have to be licensed in Hartford, they need to have a license. Or there's a fine. So putting up a sign like that, how do you enforce that? We discussed that many months ago when this first came about. And I don't know that anybody has come up with a really good way to enforce that, but at least the sign is there. And then the second thing is, is what about waste disposal? Because we know that some dog owners aren't as responsible as others.
There would definitely be disposal sites at the dog park. So to address that, if you've ever been to the ones around Sioux Falls, they have those.
Yep.
In terms of signage, we could certainly do that. One of the things we talked about at the board meeting is possibly some or all of those licensing fees, because it's only, what, $5 a year or $10? Is to somehow go back toward enhancing the dog park so dog owners are more willing to contribute, knowing that, hey, I'm helping support blank. And so that's something that we've talked about just as an idea, to encourage more voluntary compliance with the licensing. But we can certainly do whatever signage you want and there will definitely be waste disposal sites.
And then the waste disposal, but if there, if people are not cleaning up and using the waste disposal, because the girls did a wonderful job of putting up the waste disposals along the bike trail. But I still find that they aren't utilized.
And that's very frustrating. I hear you loud and clear. They're so accessible, why not use them? And so you're right, we can, we can put up all we, all we want. But yeah, there'll be people that for whatever reason don't. Or I know having been to the dog parks, people get visiting, so they're talking, not watching the dogs, so they miss it. It's not that they're intentionally ignoring it, but yeah, it does happen, you're right.
And I think it's just in the park, it's a little bit more noticeable if there's more waste laying around.
Oh, for sure.
You know, you've got the whole light path and, you know, that is what it is. But I'm just, something to kind of keep in, in mind for the park.
Other questions? Thank you.
Can I make a comment in regards to that? I wasn't anticipating speaking on it. Michelle Edgcombe Schilling. And I actually have two dogs that we did not have licensed. And we just got them licensed because we, I assumed the vet did it. And then we did get a letter and then I assumed my husband did it and he thought I did it. And then we got a letter that we think you're, you have animals that are not licensed. And so we did get ours licensed, we didn't, I just thought the vet did it. Because I just thought that came along with it. So I think the sign, signage would actually help tremendously in regards to reminding people that you do need to license your animals. Because once we looked up the letter that you haven't done this, I was like, oh my goodness, we need to get this done. And as far as picking up waste, there are so many people who don't. There are a lot of people who don't pick up their dog's waste, but there are a lot of people who do. And I know when we walk our dogs, when we see other dogs' waste, we even pick up their waste. And it's where we're picking up our dog's waste, and that little bit more isn't going to matter. So you do have the responsible dog owners that will go above and beyond and pick up other dogs' waste. We utilize the Sioux Falls Dog Parks all the time, all the time. Because we did more when we had a dog that was bigger, but he's diseased now. And it was a place where he could run and he could be off leash. So every, whenever we were at the dog parks in Sioux Falls, we would pick up any dog's waste that we saw. Just to make sure it was a clean environment for our animals as well. So just a plus side on that. But I do love the fact of having a sign that they do need to be licensed, because I think sometimes we're oblivious. So.
Yeah, to your point of the money they'll save in gas, they could put it licensing their pet.
Yes.
I'm looking towards two of them here and hearing the partnership between the detention students at West Central.
That's no more than the authority.
That's a doggone good idea.
Just a couple of things to make sure you're aware of, this prices are from 2001.
Sure.
So they're going to change.
2021?
2021, yeah.
They're from 2001, we're.
But the other thing is, most of the stuff we were looking at doing ourselves and designed it. I don't, no offense, I don't think we need to have engineered plans on something like this. So it'd be one of those things that we don't have to bid it, since it's under the 100,000 and we could just go ahead. If you guys choose to do this, it'll be something that we would just probably either re-put numbers together or start ordering stuff and get things moving.
Yeah, we've got a rough concept there that the public can find on the city's website in the packet for this, for this meeting. It's got some vegetation, some screening, some parking. There's the parking, the parking's existing obviously there.
Yeah, we'd look at maybe adding on to it to make an ADA.
Yeah.
Because it's not set up for you right now. So you'd probably put a concrete slab out there and a concrete run going to the dog park.
Yeah, I think an ADA is a good idea.
I'm going to make a motion to have Craig put prices together before we move the dog park project.
I'll second.
My only discussion is, Teresa, we've already hashed out the city's legal liability concerning this, correct?
Yeah, so we've already talked with attorney and our insurance agency. They've actually sent some sample verbech for signage that we should have on there, basically talking about liability and whatnot. Tina Larson also sent over some verbech for signage. So we would put up something together that hopefully cover all our bases.
We can cover ourselves.
Yeah, cover our bases. So dogs aren't fighting, somebody gets bit, somebody gets hurt, and yeah, it's not a.
My good friend Troy's talking about benches and you know this, that, and I'm thinking first aid kits. Platter plot.
Tennis shots.
I'll second to have Craig get bids together for the dog park. Come on ahead.
I have one more question.
Oh, you have one more question, sorry.
That land that's in question, that was, we can't do anything else with that land, correct? Because wasn't that land in some kind of.
There's wetlands further out on the other side of the path.
Yeah, but I thought that was in some kind of land swap we did a two for one or something.
No, that's, that's, the wetlands are a little further to the east. So this won't touch any of that. The, there are three holes of the disc golf course we've talked about that are there. That will have to be two, four, four holes, okay. Then we'll have to be relocated and we'll just move them further west on the other side.
But this section of land doesn't have anything to do with that?
No.
Okay.
We're out of that area, so.
I can't remember what it's called, but you know what I'm talking about, yeah.
It was wetland.
The wetland mitigation area.
Wetland mitigation and yeah.
Or the Tontka.
Yeah.
Tom.
Wetland, that's probably wrong. Get invested in that.
Ready to vote? On ahead.
Yeah.
Madison.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
O'Hair.
Yes.
And I guess. All right, thank you so much for your efforts, girls.
Congratulations on being president team, that's president. I've got Callie, I'm in good shape.
All right, Downtown Hartford has a request for an interim closing of First Street from Main Avenue East to the alley.
Thank you. I'll apologize because I forgot to introduce myself the last time I visited the podium. My name is Callie Tushin and this line item, I'm speaking on behalf of Downtown Hartford Inc. I am the standing president of the organization. I would like to provide a little bit of context on why we're presenting this request. Some people, I don't know if you're aware of all that's been going on in the last year. But Downtown Hartford, we organized in 2019. Our sole focus as an organization in our community is for revitalization of our downtown space. Over the last 20 years, the decay and stagnation of our downtown hasn't been serving us. And so we as an organization wanted to focus on events, beautification, and economic development for the downtown space. Also staying true to our historical roots and being unique to Hartford. That being said, last year in February, we solicited some grant money in order to create a master plan for our downtown space. That also led to the community-wide master plan, which I'm very excited to hear is now also close to completion. We received back the final product of the downtown portion of the master plan, which is why I'm here today. I did want to talk a little bit about the fact that we had a significant number of investors give us funds in order to put the focus and energy into re-envisioning what our downtown space will become and creating this roadmap, this platform for us to, as a community, rally behind and use as a, as a visionary opportunity to know what the priorities are for our downtown space and I'm sure for the community-wide plan as well. Sioux Valley was an investor, Mid-American were, Energy was an investor, Golden West, and then Community Foundation, both Sioux Falls and Hartford were investors. So the $15,000 that we got to pay for this project came at the expense of a lot of different individuals seeing the advantage of us funneling energy into our downtown space. That being said, last February, we started the project and it was a year-long project that required a lot of time and energy. We met with ISG multiple times. All of our spending for DHI, we put on hold, we put all of our projects in the back corner. Things that we thought would help benefit the downtown, we decided to wait because we wanted to make sure that any future plans that we have moving forward are in the scope of what this master plan says, because it's an agreed upon vision. Throughout the master plan process, we had a community collaboration and that, it was invitations were sent out to everybody in our community, including everyone in the downtown businesses. Anybody who had any aspirations to have any sort of input was allowed to come and vote on many of the different aspects of our planning, both for the community and for downtown. This particular scope, what I'm presenting tonight, was actually voted on the most as being one of the most important aspects of the particular downtown plan. Our plan encompasses lots of the downtown space. Just for reference, we consider downtown from Western to Second Street over to Main Street, down to Row Road along Turtle Creek, and then back to Western. That's, that's our scope of what downtown is. And so our downtown master plan is, of course, encompasses commercial development and housing development and parks and recreational amenities. However, what we're asking for tonight specifically is the focus on the First Street area. In our master plan, there are two different phases for First Street. Ultimately, what we would love, DHI would love, is for First Street from Main to the alley space to become a permanently closed fixture in our community that would become like our town square. It would be a parklet, it would have, it would provide the opportunity for beautification, event gathering. It would be an inviting welcoming space for both our community that currently lives here as well as guests and visitors who come traveling through and stop for the different various things that our community has to offer. So that's our ultimate goal. That's something that we would love to see, obviously finances come into play. And so whether that can happen in three years, or five years, or 10 years, that's to be determined. However, we also have in our master plan an interim closure plan. And that provides us the opportunity to still close the street so that we can have some of the events that are already on the docket for the summer, including other events that perhaps Chamber Block Party, JA Bean Big Tournament, some of these events that happen downtown and the, the use of the street. This provides that interim opportunity to dress up the street a little bit more. Part of their request is, it includes the cantonier lights that are street quality with adequate vehicle clearance, removable bollards, perhaps maybe not the boulevard plantings at this point. I did notice recently that there have been markings on the block across from us in terms of utilities. So if there's development that's going to be happening, we don't want anything to be put into place now and spend money on something that is going to have to be moved for whatever development is happening. So it has to be temporary enough that we can still move things around, but not so temporary that it's just the orange cones blocking the street. It provides a more inviting aesthetic as well as moving us in the direction of where we ultimately want to go with this park vision. Part of that also, I've said it before, I'll say it again tonight, the intersection between First and Main is a dangerous part of our downtown space. I, we've only been here for three years with the business in downtown and numerous times I have seen where either pedestrians or vehicles have come close to collision in that particular intersection. So hopefully, closing down this section of First Street would provide some safety in terms of that not being a through street for people to just be cruising through. I know that it's both some of the parking, how, how that's designed and some of the large vehicles that are parked on the corner, as well as just the speed of people not slowing down enough to go down Main. However, that is one of our concerns with, with bringing this forward. There's also, you know, just the fact that we've really worked diligently over the last year trying to come up with ideas and plans that we can implement soon rather than saying, okay, we spent all this money on this plan, now we're just going to set it. By a little way, say we check the box and say that we did something, we actually would love to be able to have the opportunity to start putting into action some of the things that will enhance our downtown space. At this time, the request is specifically to move forward with communication and collaboration with city, with ISG in order to determine that these interim plans are even within the scope of what we have available for our budget this year. We do have funds for DHI. However, if our funds are not adequate to meet specifically what the scope of this project might be, then we would need to know that so that we can plan for our budget better for next year to be able to move forward with this then. I understand that by closing First Street, especially permanently, our ultimate goal, that's going to create some traffic issues. This interim option gives us the opportunity to really evaluate both the intended consequences and unintended consequences of what that might mean so that we can develop strategies for how to deal with that. This is, I'm not asking for the excavators to come in tomorrow and tear up the street, just simply to provide us the opportunity to move in this direction so that we can really see how it's going to work, if it's going to work. And if it's not going to work, by all means, that's, that's the reality of the situation. But at least this provides us the opportunity to begin that beautification process so that it's not just the plain and simple that it currently is when we plant events downtown. We really want to encourage the creativity, the beautification, as well as the safety aspects of things. Do you have questions about what I'm asking? I know that it's, I'm not asking for any kind of motion to spend money or any of that. I know that it's, I'm not asking for any kind of motion to spend money or any of that sort. I just really want to, we want to be able to at least start moving in the direction of laying out a plan so that we know whether or not this is a viable option.
Yeah, for me personally, this agenda, yeah, I mean, to call Theresa and talk about, okay, what kind of traffic counts do we have there currently? How will this affect bus routes and things of that nature? So, yeah, we're at the discussion phase of this and what does an interim closing look like? What would those dates be? It's about 165 feet from Main to that alley or something.
Right, and as a business downtown, this closure directly affects us probably more than it does anyone else in the fact that that's where a lot of parking is. We have shipments that come in and out weekly and so that's going to affect where our trucks come to our bait area. However, in the scope of benefiting our downtown space and creating a more inviting space both for our current citizens and community as well as attraction for new businesses to come, DHI and, you know, us as a business absolutely feel like the more that we can do to create an inviting space and do the work to attract the community to gather, the better it is for all of us.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
If we interim close that portion down, I really don't, to me, I think it's like putting lipstick on a pig, trying to make a city street inviting, as you say. But hypothetically, let's say we shut that down in the interim. Because I don't know, I think, Dave, I seen a number that was over $600,000.
Yeah, that's for the whole plan.
To make it look pretty. And I don't know where that $600,000 or a million dollars is. But before we get there, so let's just call it a closed street with flower pots and benches. How do you perceive that space being utilized? Because you mentioned beanbags. Well, I know the South part has beanbag tournaments. There's one family in town that has a gigantic family reunion every summer. Maybe they, how do you perceive that space being delegated to who can use it, when they can use it, and when they can't use it?
Well, we have a process called a special event permit and I've been here multiple times in order to apply for that specific permit in order to utilize the space on the street. And so, I'm not asking for anything other than when the interim, when those bollards are up, it means somebody has applied to the city saying that they would like to utilize the space. And then, when the event is done, the bollards come down and it's still a usable street. That's what the interim part is. When it gets to the point where eventually we would love for it to become a park space with a splash pad feature and greenery and art and all the things that provide soul food for humanity, when it gets to that point, I believe there's going to be more businesses downtown that ideally, there's somebody opposite across the street from us where we can have tables and the ability to have meals out there. Ultimately, we want to have an attractive downtown. Otherwise, you know, past 20 years, status quo has been to allow our downtown space to decay, to die for all of the businesses to exit. And that's not beneficial for Hartford. I'm sorry, but it's, anybody who thinks that it is, is smoking something that's their stomach is dispensary because it's just not the facts that matter.
So, when you say interim, are you proposing? Because I'm confused, are you proposing then we keep doing what we're doing now? Or are you proposing putting up barricades and leaving the barricades up?
The interim would allow us to have the barricades up when it's in use and take them down when it's not in use for the special events that come up. On the particular plan here, there's, this one's like the permanent closure. This one is the interim closure. So, it's lighting to make it more inviting and safer. And then, there's also the bollards. I forego the planting at this point of any greenery or trees or anything in that particular space just because of the development. Because ideally, hopefully going to be happening, we don't want to put anything that we have to take out. And I know when we built, the entire sidewalk was gone. And so, I don't know what's happening over there, when it's happening, if it's happening, but we want to still move in this direction so that all of the events that happen this summer can have a little bit more attraction to them as well as creating that inviting space for people to come and enjoy themselves without it being such a temporary thing. We really want to start moving in the direction of more permanence, even though it's not a permanent fixture.
So, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, to that point, that will also be more temporary and being an interim type of situation. We'll bring up those things, as you said earlier, that are challenges or that are good things or that are intended or not intended and kind of gives you a better overall picture of, okay, what are the things that we need to be looking at?
Exactly.
Craig, how quickly could we get the traffic counters out? Now that we could start.
Yeah.
Coming far as west of Main on First, east of Main on First, north, you know, let's start to get a reference point and then.
I can get them out tomorrow. I was actually hoping to get them out last week and just, I'll leave it at just a little.
Our goal with the scope of this particular ask is that we would be in communication over the next couple of months so that it wouldn't interfere at this point with any of the bus traffic or anything with schools still in session. And that by the time we could figure some things out, if it's within our budget scope, it would be ready for summertime when we already have events on the schedule and when we already, we know that the bus traffic isn't going to be interfered with at this point.
I fear that if that section of road is closed, and I'm not saying there's very real traffic down there right now, but I promise you, if that gets closed, all that traffic will go down the elevator until the elevator starts screaming so bad and then all that traffic is going to get pushed down to, I don't even know what street it is, it runs out to.
Riverland.
Is there a road right there?
Riverland's on the, some, on the.
From the body shop to the market. The traffic's not going to go away, it's just going to get put somewhere else.
Exactly.
So, and that's rapid. So, I think if, I think that traffic's just going to move from A to B to C. That's what I think they have to put, they have some traps.
This, yeah, I mean, that supports other economic development because I think the car wash, you know, possibly dribble.
It's going to support something.
And increase the cost of gravel and things on the road.
It's going to support something, so.
Yeah, so that is still pulling right away there through the, on the north side of the elevator, correct? It still shows up as East Meth Street. Is that a fair point or is that private property at that point? To address what Mark said.
On the north side of the elevator, I don't think that's public.
No, that's private drive. That's all private drive.
Sure shows up as East Meth Street on Google Maps, but it's all private. So, yeah, you definitely have an issue to call about traffic.
Because I mean, anybody that's using that section of First Street, I don't, I think it's unrealistic to think they're going to go up the same. I think they're going to push down the elevator and then when they start screaming, they're going to push down the road. That's what I think. My girl.
And that's where those traffic counters will take that assumption away, provides some facts.
I can attest for First Street because we live between First and Second on Mont.
On Mont.
So, I take First Street. Every time I go into Sioux Falls, I come back and I take First Street. And I come all the way down, I carefully cross Main, get down to, go on on and I turn and come on to Mont. That's my route. That's what I take day in, day out. Every time I'm in Sioux Falls, that's my route. Chris, he probably takes it 50% of the time, 50% of the time. He takes probably 38, he comes up the opposite direction. I'm not going to lie, I love coming down First Street and then being able to check my mail in the winter time and not get out of my car. But for me, it's the least of my worry nowadays to drive a block to Second to come down and take a different route. And I live between First and Second. And I take that route every single time I come up through Sioux Falls, which is probably five times, five times easier.
Well, it's not often you see a business come in and say, I'm willing to give up 12 parking spaces and I think that's probably a conservative figure. If you've got 320 feet of parking on the north and south side of First and I, so I guess, you know, we could debate the pros and cons of this for quite a while. You're clearly passionate about it. I've been to communities where this has worked. I've seen how it does and, you know, provide a whole different field. I don't, a lot of people probably know this, but Golden West is investing in remodeling their office downtown rather than move it out to Highway 38 or over to Western. So, I think that to your point too, it's, there's a slow economic engine starting to turn downtown, so. It's a matter of trying to figure out how to keep it fueled.
I think, you know, living in the community, the last three years, there's been more events and more time spent downtown than probably the last 25. And I think, you know, this continues that trend and I think people are looking for that type of amenities in their community.
And if I could just say something to Travis, when we're in these meetings, another thing that was discussed about downtown and the revitalization of this is it's not about driving downtown, it's about the walkability.
Yes.
Your downtown is meant to attract visitors, attract economic development. So, it's not meant for necessarily parking spaces, but more so that walkability and bringing those visitors to the community.
And with the extension of the bike trail, that's only going to enhance the ability for folks to travel our community without driving.
Right, yeah, that bike trail now will be extended on Main, which makes accessibility to downtown better.
I'd like to. Sure, I'd like to since I hear, I think. You know, all four green spaces downtown, we have one right across the street. We have one right next to it. I don't see the sense of putting a green space in the middle of the road. The infrastructure expense alone, if there's an issue after we put in all this green space, put in a slash park or whatever she wants. What happens if we have to fix that sewer line underneath it? Not only do we tear out what's paved for them, but then we got to replace it just to get to what the city has to fix underneath it. The water, the sewer, electrical lines that all run underneath that. I don't see this as a cost effective and viable option at all at any point to take a street and make it a green space. I'm not against the green space, but let's put it on the first lot across the street somewhere where there's not going to be a utility issue and a cost issue whether you're today, five years, 10 years, 50 years down the road. Or the maintenance and upkeep of the green spaces in the middle of the street is another issue that we have to address.
So, to address those lots on the other side of the street, I'm assuming you're talking.
To the south.
To the south, yeah, those lots right now, those have been transferred to the Development Foundation.
Correct.
And they're in the process of trying to sell them.
I understand that. It would be in the best interest of my opinion, and this is just my opinion, for downtown Hartford to take some of that $37,000 that they got in their budget this year and purchase a lot from the Development Corporation if they can get one lot.
To, yeah, you make a good point and to Callie's point, at that public input session, we had a few stickers, the community was putting their stickers on the, and that one had a lot of stickers. So, for whatever reason, the community is drawn to that idea.
Again, I'm not opposing the green space downtown. Let's focus on either improving the one we have up here, the bedroom memorial park, or move it off of the street where it's not affecting our utilities, let alone our traffic flow. I am in my office every morning religiously between 6:28 and 6:34, every morning, Monday through Friday. I see the traffic in the mornings from the parents dropping off their students during school, picking them up after school. I see the UPS FedEx guys all coming First Street, First Street, Amazon. 10 times a day, I see them at the corner. Why? Because I step outside my office, I'm a smoker and I have a south-facing window and I see that corner. If we permanently close that in five years from now, it's permanently closed. Well, we, again, averted traffic behind the elevator or put all the traffic up to the school up on Second Avenue, on Second Street. All we're doing is asking for a situation which we're already having to address. The school is already having to address for the safety of the children up there at Second Mont. You know, in Second Bananmark where the kids are crossing the street and the hall is getting hit. We have a stop sign there. It's a four-way stop. We have one right here. People still run through it all the time.
You make a.
Be surprised on the times I've seen the sheriff accident just walk halfway through the intersection before he stops and busy stuff.
Checking his cell phone.
Checking his cell phone. Not the sheriff, but I mean, you know.
Sheriff vehicles, emergency vehicle, they don't have to. I know that because I've asked those questions. They don't, the road don't fly so much.
It's simple, the council roll a vehicle like pass the stop sign. Because I'm, not that I'm a nosy man, I just, I go outside, I still have a nasty habit. It's my habit, I don't push on anybody.
These are always heated debates. This is heated, this is very educational.
My point is economically, downtown, the green space, true. Physically, financially, it's not worth it. Economically, it's not worth it because of the repercussions in the future if something happened underneath, when it hasn't been updated or serviced.
True.
And as far as building downtown goes to be pedestrian-friendly, we are pedestrian-friendly to a point. And I don't see it getting much better than what it is because unless you tear down the Gage House, Golden West, Legion, my building, the Mont building, US Bank, and build all new buildings that go higher where you have retail underneath and residential above, you're two blocks. Downtown Hartford is two blocks. It has a great aspiration to want to buy more land to the west from Main Avenue towards Western and continue to build, make a bigger downtown square. We're not dead with South Dakota. We are Hartford, South Dakota. We shouldn't try and compare ourselves to other communities. Look at T. T has not done nothing with their downtown outside of Main. Pedestrian friendly. You can walk down the street safely without getting on the sidewalk. Brandon the same way, Harrisburg the same way. They're limited downtown to what they have for real estate and they're focusing their growth outside of that area just like the city of Hartford is. Focusing growth over to the south, to the east, to the north.
Yeah, well, there's clearly a group that believes in, yeah, the downtown.
I'm not opposed to a green space downtown, again, it's just from a business owner and financial point of view. I mean, I'm a multimillion dollar year business and I can see a $600,000 project five years after something's put in, coming up. And that's at today's cost, that's not accounting for inflation in five years or 10 years.
Like Travis said, you think those are all really good points and I think we.
Craig, can you give us that information, what utilities are under that street? Power or the power of?
There is, well, power, I don't know, but.
It's got to be, I think power's in the alley there.
So, like the utilities, like the power or your fiber, if they get hit, they bore. They don't cut up the street anymore, they just bore underneath wherever they got to. So, they're not going to be impacted by whatever structures on top of that area.
Just the water main and sewer.
We've got a water main, a sewer main.
Sure. Well, I think at this point, we're just, you know, getting, let's get some traffic counts. Let's have, let's continue this discussion in two weeks and go from there.
Sounds good.
I hope that I walk you into executive session here. I hope I'm closing the bar down. Daniel, who I'm still superintendent of West Central.
Go Children's.
Yeah, I've changed. Don't make me go to that point. Also, don't make me the last speaker because I've got a full page of notes now. So, dream, if you will, a bus route. We come in from Western and I'm not going to give you an exact number of buses, but let's go with eight. We come in from West, nine, thank you.
Nine buses.
Nine buses, we come in from Western. Currently, we come in on First, we go over to the elementary, then we enter in our, the Hartford Elementary parking lot. We drop off, again, it's one of those, maybe not everybody thinks of, but what side is the door on in every bus? door on in every bus? We head north, kids get out to the right into the buildings. It's just, I'm just going to model in here, but they then enter Second Street and turn east to the alleyway and then head south and we load up at that point. And then the buses go wherever they may. Some of them to the low school, some out to Humboldt Elementary, some out to our stop to pick up more kids. This closing, either interim or permanent, will affect us and we accept that. One of the things that, I bring very few things in my regime where my evil just got me when you hired me as superintendent. I haven't brought any coaches, any assistant coaches, none of that, just me. But one thing that I'm unapologetic for, and I hope each and every one of you are tired of hearing this from me at some point in the future, we're one district, but we're four communities. Hartford, Humboldt, Law Lake, and Ellis. We need to support the better business for each of those communities. It's my deep seated belief that as those communities grow, our district will grow. As our district grows, those communities will grow. We've gotta be in concert with each other. The interim closing, it's my understanding that's already taken place, correct? I mean, we have, that has been closed on.
After school hours.
And that's...
It doesn't go downhill when we got to the start.
Careful, you're supporting my point here. Yeah, it is. It's after school hours and it's on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, which we don't have school. Even, I'll stop the sarcasm. We don't have school then. Most of them, some of them are in summer events and again, we don't have, we don't have school, we don't run miles in summer. So there are times that may interrupt that bus route, but when I sat down and talked to our director of transportation, we'll adjust. We can, we will. Because the primary thing, again, from a school standpoint and the community as I would think, is support of each other and the growth and betterment of our four communities. This will affect us and I support it. As the superintendent of West Center Schools and I speak for the board, we support it. I think that's it. One thing that I might, and this is for another day, Amy, you've heard this multiple times from me, Wound Socket to our West is probably one of the best examples I've ever seen as far as a community and school district relationship. To give you one quick example, the district wanted a performing arts center, but they couldn't foot the bill. The community wanted something that they could have their elder mate or just a meeting hall, so they split the bill. From the outside, it's a four-corner sheet metal building. On the inside, it's well accoutred, it's, there are good things in there. And the district uses it and the community uses it. That is, it doubles your mind, it fosters community spirit in your school district. And again, we are one district made up of four communities. So again, for me as a superintendent and as a representative of the Board of Ed, we support this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I thought the door on the bus was in the back.
It's okay if it finds it. And if you press that door, you're picking up dog logs. I'm done. Get your weight and sleep.
That's all we have on our end for new business. Okay. If we have any executive session? With that being said, we'll confirm more to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.